The time is now six thirty-five on Wednesday, November eighteenth. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Moni Village Board. And if you'll rise for the point please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward over which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Pastor DeBries, I believe you're giving your speech this evening.
Can you pray with me? Father God, we come before you with thanksgiving and praise for your faithfulness is never ending towards us. And we want to stop and recognize all that we have to be thankful for tonight. But we thank you for the life that we have to bring us here, the breath that we have in our lungs, the feet that were able to carry us into this room, the minds that you've given us to be able to make these decisions that will be made on behalf of our community. And we just ask that your continued hand of blessing, of mercy, of grace would be upon us, be upon our country, be upon our world, Lord God. In these desperate times, Lord, may we look to you as our anchor, look to you as our guide, as our source. And we pray these all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Gordon, if you'll do the roll call please.
Trustee Racing, President Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray, here, Colston, President Horn, here, and Pop.
Here. At this point, we'll go to open to the public, agenda items only. If you'll come to the podium, give your name, an address, and any accounts of previous events, please. Okay. And takers on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion, second.
Okay, we got Pop and Racing. Roll call please. Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Colston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
And Racing.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon, do you have anything to report this evening?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything this time either, Mr. Administrator.
Good evening. Thank you. Just a couple of items for your calendars as a reminder of the village is required to complete NIMs, NIMs instruction, introduction to the incident command system. It has to do by December the eighteenth, if you could mark that on your calendar for me, please. It's for village officials, staff, administration, full-time employees. Also, on December the sixteenth, it will be at two P.M., the village will be having a joint TIF review board meeting. It's a public meeting, we'll be reviewing past year in the TIF district. Financial report will be given. And number three, I've asked the Moni Historic Society if they would to be present tonight. One of the things that we wanted to talk about was just make the board aware of its current status, specifically the creamery building and what the status is. And we've met several times with their board. And Anne Marie Maninago is here from Will County Historic Preservation Commission. She's a secretary with them, if you would look them forward. But she's also here tonight on behalf of the Moni Historical Society. They just will give us an update on what the village needs to do.
Okay, what we, the Moni Historical Society is nominating the creamery for landmark status. As Secretary for the Will County Historic Preservation Commission, I had given you a packet with regards to what would be the creamery would be a status symbol for the Moni area. There are numerous sites that you can access, whether it be for tourism or for your businesses. As being a landmark status here, it's a very good public tool and, you know, for the Moni area. I understand there is some concern about what would happen if you changed or did any kind of changes to the creamery. Because the creamery landmark would be within the village limits of Moni, Will County has no jurisdiction over any permits or any kind of reconstruction, any, hopefully not demolition, but any type of reconstruction to or renovation to the creamery, there is no jurisdiction that Will County can hold over Moni. That is solely, those permits are solely done by Moni Village and therefore we have nothing. All we are asking is that whatever renovations you make to the creamery, just to give us notes so that we can put it on the files. Other than that, you get a plaque, there is recognition in a lot of local papers. There's grants that you can get that are fifty-fifty from five hundred dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. We have a host of opportunities that it's free access to help you with renovations, with cost, with doing those grants, everything free of cost. So it is a very win-win situation for Moni to have that creamery landmarked.
If you can stay there just for a minute in case the board has questions. Is, and do any of the trustees have questions?
If I may.
Yes.
Apparently Cook County has much stricter requirements on landmark status. Is that correct to say that to you?
I really wouldn't know about Cook County.
Well, they won't even let you change the color of the paint of the wall.
Not in Will County, not ones within the jurisdiction or owned by the village.
Okay, so.
It's Cook County limits.
Yes, we pretty much can, let's say, reconstruct any way we want to.
Correct. You know, we have to make it ADA compliance because of the public land building? All that, there is no jurisdiction, and that was confirmed today by the Will County State's Attorney for the Land.
Very good, so you're right, this is a false clause.
All right, can you go ahead with the last comment there? So there would be a requirement to make it ADA compliant?
You would probably have to if it's considered to be within, for public access. You know, I mean, that's probably down the line. I wouldn't say that it'd be something that you'd have to worry about right now. But the Moni Historical Society is also, is, you know, interested in keeping that building intact and helping out with it too as well.
So I think what Trustee Pop was alluding to is there's been towns that have given, I'm not so sure if it's landmark status, but sometimes there's like a historic district even, and there's regulations that are imposed. I remember an area in Holwood where it was like that where.
Well, that's Cook County though.
I understand, but to dovetail on the question, whereas there's an expectation to adhere to certain things that are era-specific, and while that certainly would be nice.
Correct.
I think one of the concerns that some of the officials or the public may have is by making this designation, does that somehow or another encumber or obligate us to do anything other than what we've already been doing, which is simply maintaining for the time being until we actually have a plan or funding or something else to do something more?
There is no obligation, it will not, there is no obligation that it will help enhance the property value nor deteriorate the property value if you landmark that building. And it is stated that also in the documentation that I had given now.
I know that was one of the questions that I've heard and wanted to.
Right, and Will County is, like I say, if there is not a governing body that it falls under, so technically if it's outside of your jurisdiction limits, there might be something that Will County would like to see done prior to someone maybe changing or renovating their structure. But because the creamery is within the village limits, we have no jurisdiction over that. And it solely would be the permits, any type of permits, any type of structure changes, anything, but always falling within the guidelines of your village.
And the fact that it's just one building, it's one of many buildings, if you will, on a single parcel, makes no relevance in that regard either.
No.
Any other trustees?
I don't have a, just a statement for my observation too. And like you said, it's a win-win for us, and I think it's kind of a no-brainer for us as well. The one thing since our incorporation, a hundred and seventy-six years ago, Moni has not done a good job of record-keeping and the historical significance of the town, which the Historical Society has come about in the last five or six years and dug up more on our fabulous history than has ever been done. So there are many more buildings besides the creamery that I think.
Oh, yes, right.
And we would, needs to be taken a look at, and I can't thank you guys enough for wanting to do this for the creamery too. And I think too, this would give us a status that we have not had before, and we need to take good care of our history as well as our future.
Right, there is an intergovernment agreement that has been given to your administrator. So as soon as that is processed and gone back to Will County, they will put it forth. You will have a plaque that will be attached to the building, and usually it's put into quite a few different publications so that, you know, for that particular event. But also too, there'll be, we actually have brochures and websites that then anybody would access on they're looking for something as far as heritage-wise with the creamery. We'll get also, we can link all of your village websites to that particular site as well.
Any other trustees?
If I could add, I know there's been some other questions. I've gone on your website, to your website, and those questions are addressed. You've got them systematically in order, and it's, you know, pretty informational. And obviously, as you indicated, there isn't a responsibility that's placed on the village if we do receive the status that we automatically have to turn it into that era and do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, I've asked Farnsworth Engineering if they could just kind of give the board an update on the past year, a year review for the Egyptian Trail. I know this has been near and dear to everyone's heart, and I just wanted the board to be made aware of where we're at.
Well, thank you, Ruben, for having us out here. Be glad to give a project update since the last time we were here, which was back in July when we did the open house, the second open house for the project. At the open house, we got our good feedback. We really did not get any negative feedback from the open house presentation. So today, we're just going to provide a project status as where it stands now and what has been accomplished since, well, for most of this year. We have also been providing the mayor and some village staff monthly status report, which is what we just passed out to you, the latest one that was submitted in this month, November. So in December twenty-fourteen, we submitted the pre-final. I'm hearing an echo. We submitted the pre-final project development report, the intersection drain, intersection design study, and storm water management report and location drainage study to both the state and Will County for their review and approval. Throughout the spring and summer, we coordinated with the state, IDOT, the county, and the village to address the comments on these documents as they came in. So far, we've addressed all their comments and have gained approval of the intersection design for the roundabout. We have approval for the drainage, location drainage study, which is what IDOT requires, and then the storm water management report, which is the report that the county requires for storm water management. We have also obtained any environmental, all the final environmental clearances to move forward with the project. Once we had all these documents approved, we were then finally able to submit the actual project report, the final project development report to the state. That was submitted in September, and we are currently waiting for IDOT approval of the final report, District One. IDOT, the local district, has approved the project development report. We're just waiting for Central Office in Springfield to approve that. In the meantime, to keep the project moving forward, we have been working on getting the project plans and specifications ready as well. In July, we submitted the preliminary plans and specifications to Ruben, well, to the village, Ruben and DJ for their review, and we have submitted with you to review it. And based on their comments, we are continuing to work on getting the pre-final project supplemental plans, the plan profile sheet, cross-sections that we need, the roundabout landscaping, any lighting design miscellaneous details, and the special provisions needed for the project to be submitted to the state. We have also collaborated with the village and also the county to review three potential drainage design alternatives. And right now, we have an alternative that we are proceeding with as the village's preferred storm water detention design. We continue on to update quantities so we can get the cost estimate. Cost estimate for the project is required to be included in the pre-final supplemental that we'll be sending to IDOT. All that is, well, on the cost part, we don't anticipate a change. We, our current or previously provided estimate of three point three million is still where we are with the project. So there's been no change to that. Currently, we are planning to submit the pre-final plans, the specifications and cost estimates to IDOT, and of course, the village for their review second week of December. Now, that's all dependent upon getting that final PDR sent. We send that to IDOT in September, but we have to get that final approval before we can even submit the pre-final plans. So that's where we stand with moving forward the project. We have also been looking at right away.
Excuse me, before you continue, may I just ask a question? Do you have any feel for when they may approve that?
They told me it typically takes four to six weeks to review plans and get it back to us. So we submitted it back in September. District One reviewed it and sent it to Central Office middle of October. Yeah, middle of December. So we are, we did that four to six weeks since it went to Springfield.
There's so many changes to commands, that's why I interjected there. I didn't mean to, but I wanted to get an answer, and I would have forgotten.
That's okay.
Oh, I forget.
That's okay. So basically, we can't submit that pre-final plans until we have a project development report that has been blessed by the state. In regards to right away, there were six parcels that we needed to acquire right away from. All six parcels have been appraised. All six parcels, now we have completed what they call review appraisal on them. Basically, you got to get appraised, and you got to get somebody else to review the appraisal before you can move on to negotiations. But right now, we can't begin negotiations until, again, we have the project development report that has been approved. So once we are ready to move forward, we're getting the negotiations started. Everything is set for that, but we just have to wait for that project report to come back. In regards to schedule, as we previously discussed, we still seem that this project, most of it, the goal is still have most of it completed in twenty sixteen. But as we discussed before, we're going to probably stage it in multiple stages where stages one, two, which is the north part of the project and the south of the project may be completed in twenty sixteen, and then the roundabout portion could be completed twenty seventeen. And the contractor has an option to flip-flop it. Really, there's no good or right reason to do either the center first or the ends. But the objective is to be able to complete as much as possible in twenty sixteen. What are we planning to do moving forward in twenty sixteen? We hope to get that PDR approved as soon as possible so that we can begin right away negotiations. After they get their pre-final plans, they have to give us comments back. We address them and get the final plans to IDOT and estimate as well. And then we're going to prepare for state letting, hopefully in the spring, and start construction beginning this, next year. Again, unfortunate, well, we can stick with this schedule as discussed, but everything is dependent upon really three things that could impact the schedule. We are assuming that we're going to have the timely agency reviews from IDOT, and then we also anticipating that there will be smooth right away negotiations. That could be a sticky point, you know, when you start negotiating with other people for their property and utility relocation timelines. Those are the three things that are kind of out of our hands, but it's important to track and see how that's going. I'd like to turn it over for another colleague of mine to talk about the Moni water main portion of the project. But before I walk away, I thought I'd open it up if there's any questions before he comes out about the project.
I'd just like to know, what will the diameter of the circle be?
The drivable part is a hundred and thirteen feet.
A hundred and sixteen with an eighteen-foot wide ring.
In the middle.
And it's a one lane?
Yes, one lane.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'll open.
Trustees, do you have questions for us?
Okay, I'll let Brian talk about the water main, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brian Fisher, I'm working on the water main design for the replacement of the water main in the Egyptian Trail right away. And I've met previously with Ruben and DJ and came up with a preliminary alignment for the water main through that corridor. Also coordinating with Aqua to make sure that we have a connection point somewhere within that corridor. Currently, we're working on the fifty percent design supplemental, which we plan on submitting to the village about mid-December. Get the comments back from the village, and our plans would be to have pre-final water main plans completed by mid-January. That's really all I had to present. If there's any questions for me on the water main design? Construction on that will be concurrent with the roadway. It will be constructed in phases with the roadway. That'll be the most cost-effective for the village, so.
And the least destructive.
And least destructive too, yes, correct.
Then, just the two questions done you had on that, will this include the retention or detention portion of it too, or just simply the?
Well, the retention and detention is part of the roadway project.
Okay.
There's a Chinese wall between the two vehicles. These represent Aqua, and they're representing us.
I'm actually representing the village on the, this is the village water main.
Our water main, I'm sorry.
Your water main location in the Egyptian Trail right away, yes.
And then the second half of the question is, and just refresh my memory, and we were talking about at one point two, that Aqua wanted some leeway or right away into a tap-in at one end of this? Is this the same project?
Yeah, I do know, there is.
Yeah, that's it.
In the, in the back, near the roundabout, there's a location for an anticipated connection point, which has tentatively been agreed to by the village and Aqua. I know Aqua has submitted their ninety percent plans for review to the village. I don't know what the status of that review is right now, but the approximate location of that connection is shown in the drawing back here. The actual details of the connection still need to be worked out as far as what type of valving and manholes and things are going to be in that location, but.
Will that hinder, or should, you know, like the south end of our project then be dependent on that?
You know, just so everybody's aware, I know, you know what's going on, but just for those who are watching, so they understand, what's happening here is Aqua Illinois has requested and has come to an agreement with the village to, since we're carrying on the Egyptian Trail anyhow, and they have requested and gotten some approval from the ICC to allow them to go basically up through us somehow to get to University Park to service them and beyond, probably. There was, since we knew that we're going to begin with this project, that we thought it prudent to try to coordinate it so that both can be done at a similar time. It is pretty much a spring break, as much as it could possibly be done without disrupting much of anything else. And so, so the public understands that's what's going on. So there is a little bit of a separation as far as where, not Brian's concerned, sorry. But Farnsworth is representing both the village and Aqua, so there's a little bit of a distinction between what is being done on their part as compared to ours. But we're also needing to take that into account with our main infrastructure and things of that sort as well.
Can you clarify, they're doing this from an engineering point of view?
Correct.
Right.
Correct, yes. And but to go to Trustee Gonzalez's question, there will be, as part of that agreement, a consideration that if for some reason there was ever an issue with our water supply or anything else, Public Works Superintendent thought it prudent, and I agree, and I think we all had that determination, that it doesn't leave us abandoned in the event that if there's ever a problem with our water supply, which we don't anticipate, but we're already just about turned away from having additional supply we need or even doing a mix if we ever needed to. So that was the consideration that she was referring to there in your addressing. The, everything else, we're trying to make sure that that part of it, they kind of, when they're laying their pipe along with ours and everything else, those pieces are getting reassembled as, as our project is taking place. So they're not digging it up after we've done our road and roundabout and everything else. All their work is going to have to be tied to our work schedule, not the other way around.
That's great.
Of course, they want us to get it done as quick as possible too. Yes.
Any questions for me?
Just real, real quick, Phil Allen, also with Farnsworth, to address the comment about the detention. You had asked, one of the requirements for tying into the county's sewer at the north end of it, I don't know, road, was that we provide detention so that we're not overflowing in pipes. So yes, we are providing detention for all the.
As I was saying, like the I-N-I portion, they have.
And if I indicated, you're still in the process of, you have three options that you've got on the table that's being, if I understand correctly, all being considered. Whoever. I heard you say something about three options in the building.
We have three options, we had three options. We've already gone through all three of them, and we landed on the option to decide. And that exhibit over there actually shows what has been decided, and that is have an underground storage tank for all the storm water, and then it get piped out to join the county. There you go, that was the plan.
Anybody else regarding the Egyptian Trail water?
Thank you, thank you. Attending on your court.
I did have a question for Ruben, real quick, about the training.
And then during?
NIMs compliance training. How many hours is that, Ruben?
That's three.
Three hours, okay. At least it's not six, three.
At this point, we'll go on to the official's report, Public Works, Trustee Gray.
Yes, I have a few things this evening. First of all, the leaf pickup, the last leaf pickup from the village will be Saturday after Thanksgiving. Again, all you need to do is come to the village, the stickers are free, you put them in the brown bag, you put them on the corner, and they will be picked up. Also, in the garbage can too, that's marked yard waste. Please, I was talking with our superintendent. The concern is with all this rain and then the snow coming, clogging up the sewers and not getting the proper drainage by just throwing everything out the street. So we would appreciate if you do that, and we will pick them up one more time. Because of the holiday, it'll be Saturday instead of Friday. Also, too, if you notice when you come down Court Street, the house right here, the yellow house, has been demolished. That was purchased by the village for use of a park area. You've seen in the last few years, we've expanded to the west of the park building. That is in the works, in the bigger picture of making more area for the kids to play. Again, down the line, we will determine what's put there, but that was purchased by the village at a minimal cost and is being demolished. It should be cleaned up, hopefully. It should be cleaned up hopefully, uh, in a few weeks. Um, the tree, with the warmer weather we've had, they had additional thirty trees put in, which totaled a hundred and ten for the season, uh, that is done for the season. Uh, the stump removal has been done, they filled in as much as they can, they will come back in after the winter season and start planting trees again, but just so you know, they, there was time to put thirty additional trees in, uh, towards the end of the spring, which they weren't anticipating. Uh, one more thing, which is something new the village is doing as far as the water bills, uh, to lighten the load on the office staff and the mail carriers, if you wanna call it that way. Um, what we're going to start doing now, on the first notice of the water bill, if you are late on your water bill, the Public Works gentlemen will be going around putting these on your doors with the notice to come in and pay your water bill before it gets shut off. If that is not done, you will see a red door hanger, notice of your water bill being, or your water being shut off. That way, there's no confusion as far as it got lost in the mail, I never received it in the mail. And again, also lightens up the office staff to be doing their due diligence and, uh, doing other things. So again, these just came in this week, you will be seeing, seeing them, if you see them at your door, hopefully you won't. This is the first one you will receive saying you're coming to pay your water bill. This will be your second one with the notice that your water will be shut off.
And how many days before shut off does these go out?
Five.
Thank you.
Trustee Gray, when you receive the yellow, does that mean you already have a late charge?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like, that hasn't changed as far as the water bill goes, again, it's just saving some time and putting it through the mail. You're still gonna have your late fee, and again, you still would unfortunately have that hundred dollar, uh, fee to turn your water back on. But again, these will be unfortunately hanging on your door if you do not pay and you'll see them. Again, these just came in this week, this will be starting, uh, in the next cycle. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, end of report.
Parks and Recreation trustee Gonzalez.
Um, just a couple things with Parks and Rec again, um, just to let everybody know, we still continue to add and, um, continue our programs here, and I wanna thank Mary Jo for keeping that going. Um, and we do have a new, Officer Ferries, it's gonna kill me if I say this wrong, Muay Thai, something like karate being held on Saturday mornings, and, um, Officer Pete Ferries is actually doing that as well. So again, uh, please check the website or come into the office here and talk to Mary Jo about signing kids up, uh, for classes. And then, secondly, is the, um, St. Paul's Church on December fourth, we're gonna have a Cinderella's Ball, uh, for the, the little ones, so the, all the, uh, Disney princesses and Prince Charming will be making the appearance for a photo op. That won't take very long, and I assure you, uh, those little girls will love to see those princesses, so please bring them up for that. And they, they can even get autographs, as I understand it, all eight of them are going to be there and Prince Charming. Um, and you can register here or call Mary Jo up until November twenty-fourth. And the village tree lighting is, and our evening with Santa is on Saturday, December fifth. The tree lighting outside at Village Hall at six-thirty, and then we walk, we traipse across the street, um, for some more entertainment by Santa and Mrs. Claus and some elves and some puppets and some choirs. So please join us for that as well. End of report.
Great, thank you, Mary. Finance trustee Horn.
Treasurers' report was filed with the county on October twenty-eighth. We will be voting and as matter of routine, uh, approving the village levy, that'll be at our next board meeting. There is still no state budget, uh, the two sides have not met, I believe, since May. I believe they are meeting next week, is what I read in the paper. Um, so hopefully there's, there's some movement there starting next week. And it is, uh, it is in the state constitution and, uh, by law, they do have to have a budget. Anyways, uh, general fund expenses are forty-nine point forty-five percent of budgeted expenses, uh, for the six months of this fiscal year, so we are right exactly where we should be moving forward.
Business Development with trustee Holson.
Just a couple notes from Kevin, that he passed on to me. I participated in a call on November twelfth. And, uh, with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, Illinois DECO, uh, the major thing out of that is the edge tax credit program has been reinstated and will be effective for the two thousand sixteen tax year. Uh, the ex, the edge tax credit is administered at the state level, and in order to qualify, the applicant company must make a seven-figure capital investment and create additional jobs in Illinois. The other thing that, uh, he mentioned that, uh, I would pass on is the Enterprise Zone. Um, we have been, uh, okayed for certification, uh, with the five, I believe it's five other villages. Uh, it's an area of fourteen point nine-two square miles, five municipalities and two counties are participating. That takes effect January first, two thousand sixteen. The primary incentive on that that, uh, is one that can be marketed is the sales tax deduction for building materials, which allows a developer to purchase building materials free of sales tax. Um, I'll pass the rest of this on to the clerk for him to add to them, Kenz. Thank you, end of report.
Building Services with trustee Butler.
Yes, uh, Derby Meadows, Meadows is getting their foundations in prior to the cold weather, so that project is moving right along. And, uh, Blue Beacon, the business that's expanding here, is progressing along. World Kitchen is doing, uh, took out some permits to do some upgrades in their building in hopes of getting some, some coming in there, so. End of report.
Public Safety and Police, trustee, or is it number four, Mr. Mayor? We wanted the attorneys' report, um, where I believe the, uh, first and the last are being removed, uh, until we have some more, more, um, whatever. Final?
Yes, sir.
That's what I didn't screw it. At this point, uh, trustee Holson is putting a lot of work into this, uh, K two, and Larry, you'll just go ahead and start with that.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Under K two, as the mayor indicated, the crime prevention rental housing ordinance. I believe this is distributed to the board, uh, a few months ago, uh, for review. I think the intent of the board and the mayor was to obviously, uh, increase the value of the, our area and to make sure that the renters who are gonna be using the premises in Moni abide by our rules and regulations. A lot of villages do have this type of ordinance, uh, to regulate the rental housing and also to put the renters on those, what the requirements are that we expect. It's a pretty strict ordinance for our protection, there are repercussions in there. If the landlord does not abide to the same, that same holds true with the tenant. Uh, once again, the intent is to maintain the housing standards that the village has adopted in recent years. Uh, there are quite a few neighboring villages that have this type of, uh, ordinance that was not unheard of, and as far as I understand, they've been very effective. Again, the intent is for the landlord to register with the village, uh, at that point in time, we know who's renting, and the landlord's got an obligation to put forth in their lease, the obligations of the tenant. If the tenant fails to do so, uh, not only are they subject to eviction, but also the landlord's subject to citations. Uh, it does get their attention and has worked very well in some other communities, so it's up for the boards to view of consideration.
If I, if I could, I, I do wanna address a couple things on this, I know that this was, um, a lot of work on trustee Holson, I want to comment on the, uh, the amount of effort that he put into starting this, and I know that there's been a lot that's happened since it was originally presented. Time has, you know, gone by, um, a couple things at play here. Uh, one is, there, there may be some things that we deem necessary to make improvements on this in the future, but it's prudent, because if we're gonna implement this, the goal was, when it was presented earlier in the year, was to have it as close to operational for January first, or else we're gonna be another year before we have the ability to, to work on it. So, um, excuse me, being the case that this is gonna be the first time that we've had anything like this, I think we can expect there may be some, um, movement on it, uh, improvements and adjustments going forward, but for the time being, to get us started, I think it's, you know, it's as good as we're gonna get for now until we figure out the nuances of that. Trustee Holson, I, if you care to share your, um, anything on this, or, that's, you know, you're, as a sponsor of this, truly.
Uh, first of all, again, I'd like to thank the people that were involved on this. We had good comments from several of the citizens and people who have actually own property in the area and were renting it. Uh, we had good participation, Janet Blue was very instrumental helping us with this, she had been involved with this in the city of Aurora. But the whole idea here is to start to regulate, uh, and help both the landlords as well as the villagers. This actually helps the landlords, and some of the feedback we got as we investigated this is the landlords benefit out of this. The purpose here is not to collect fees, the fee schedule is relatively minimal, uh, as long as people comply. It's when people don't wanna comply, don't wanna take care of their homes, that they can run into penalties, and I think that's the way it should be. As a village, we need to be able to protect, uh, the values of people, uh, who live in the village, whether they own a home or, or they're using it for a business to rent a home. So I think this is a good start, there will be some changes, I would, um, administrator Batista, did we ever get with Larry, who had asked about, um, meeting with us?
Yes, yes, he was contacted, we did talk about it, and he was fine with the last meeting that we left today.
Okay, with that being the case, I mean, he was the only person who, who had some initial questions and was very involved, I appreciate his help, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember Larry's last name, but. Sure, thank you. Um, but again, I think this is a good start, probably will want, you know, continue to work on it. It does go hand in hand with the nuisance ordinance, which I think we still wanna work on next year, but I think this will be a good start.
And, and they, and I know, I, I know we had stated earlier in the year that we wanted the two to go together, but again, because of timing, in order to get this deployed for, for this as a licensing issue, the other is complementary to this, um, we'll, we'll need to get that hammered out as well, so, shortly. Um, I, I, just as a observational thing here, uh, uh, there are a few things I'm noticing that, to take note of, that there's some grammatical formatting issues that are, uh, if you'll notice, like on page eight, uh, it starts off with item two and then towards the bottom of the page, you know, item one, so, when the...
What do you mean line number for that?
That would be line number two ninety-seven. So there's a few things where just the auto numbering, if you will, of the document, uh, it was not, uh, implemented correctly. So, with, with the caveat of, uh, some formatting corrections, uh, as, uh, the, the attorney will review, there are little things like that, but you know, those types of things, uh, aside from those changes that will have to be made, or else, you can't have a two without a one, right?
All due respect, there is one, it's a continuation of section four.
Section four, oh, I see.
Starting on page six.
Uh, one ninety-three, got it, okay. Well, if there, if, because there's multiple layers of numbers there, because you notice on number two twenty-five is also has a one, has a subset of D it looks like, so, it's multi-layered, and it probably should be a Roman letter, Roman one, instead of a, uh, capital. So, just to keep that confusion from taking place in the future, so, Larry, if we can.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, that being said, with the, with the, uh, consideration of possible formatting corrections that might need to take place, and I don't know, it had, having had looked at this, if you guys have had anything that you thought was supposed to have been in there that needs to be considered before we actually present this for an actual vote, no?
So I just want a little clarity, I know this is so much shorter than the first one that we had ten months ago, so thank you for that. Um, and then just to be clear, um, Larry? So the landlord then, when the corporation or landowner rents a home, say, they have to give us or be in constant contact, or we have the ability to contact a person twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week?
Yes.
The person who rents that home, whatever name is on the lease or on the rent, we have to be able to contact them, or the landlord needs to be able to contact them, and then they, the less E, needs to register each person who is actually going to reside in the home.
The rent, yes, mayor.
So we will know how many people are living in the home.
Yes, and that's under the BOKA code, BOKA requires how many people, not requires, dictates how many people could reside in a home, especially residential home, and I think probably the most important revision in this ordinance is that the landlord's got an obligation to set forth the tenant's do's and don'ts. If they do this, fine, if they don't, they could be evicted, and that, that carries a lot of weight, if you go before a hearing officer, once you put that person on notice, they can't come back with the excuse, I didn't know about it. If it's in that lease, which is most important, then I think the village is on solid ground.
And just, if I could interrupt on that, uh, point, one of the reasons that was important to me is because, again, uh, in the neighborhood where I live, we had a situation where, um, one of our neighbors rented out their house to somebody, and almost immediately, there were four families living in there, and when he tried to do something, he was not allowed to do anything. And, uh, this is very frustrating for landowners, uh, when they're not able to go in and, and to take action because there's nothing in writing that says what the, so this, this actually helps to protect the landowners as well as the village.
And on the, the other side of that coin too, then, for our neighbors or the neighbors who own homes too, we need to know, to protect them too, we don't, you know, want to have four families living in there. We need to know who's in there so that we can protect all of us too, the homeowners as well as the, the renters.
There were a few things, I don't forget, remember which ones they were that were put in here, uh, that, the request of the people revolved this today, try to, uh, help them a little bit, uh, but for the most part, uh, that's a separate issue that needs to be addressed outside of this stuff, and...
But there were, but those items were included?
There were a couple that were included for them, and I don't remember which ones they were now, it's been a while, but... But, uh, we very much appreciate their input, we had several meetings with them, and they were very helpful in bringing forth some of their concerns and suggestions, and they were very much in favor of the landlord ordinance from their perspective as well. But for the most part, this does not affect that type of a property. So based upon that, uh, do you need a motion?
Yeah, just.
Discussion?
Yeah.
How is this not affecting the revolvement when they're running, I believe, and I don't have a specific section of this, but, what's that?
They own the house itself.
They rent the lots.
They rent the lots.
So, was there, was there an exception, where is that?
And your specific, can you be clear on that?
I'll let the attorney hold the press, have a swing.
Uh, more discussion, I would like to know what kind of crime does one have to pass some special ordinance?
Well, the, a couple things, when you, when you look at the...
Is that crime prevention ordinance, and it's a lot more than just crime prevention here. This is more of, uh, ordinance on property maintenance than there is crime prevention.
There, there is section, uh, crime two hundred mark, I'm not sure what's it, and you're worried, you'll find it, but a couple things to take note of.
And first, multi-five thousand, where the basin is, all the ordinance of a town of, how many hundreds of thousands of people that live up there? Name one little town around here, or something like this.
It, I don't know if hundreds of thousands of people, but I'm, I know that the towns immediately adjacent to us, such as Park Forest, Merchant Park,
Okay, which has high crime rates. Where is our crime? And we're in San Antonio, trying like that here.
Well, I'll, I'll take a little bit of issue with.
This is more of a personal vendetta on your neighbor, that you had some bad neighbors living next to you, so you created this ordinance so you don't have to have that riff on you. So you created this ordinance so you don't have to have that riffraff in you?
No.
That's all this was?
No, this actually came as a, this came out of a request of three different citizens that I have in writing, who sent me emails asking me if I would take an action. These people live in a different part of town. And they asked me to take action on that because they have problems. This also came about as a result of...
The company that's buying up all the houses that are renting them out?
Okay, I'll let you talk. I'll let you talk.
And we taxing them? And we kind of punishing them for buying empty houses? Isn't that what this is for too?
This is to regulate companies that buy our homes for investment and then manage them from a different state. That's correct.
Are they not paying their taxes on that?
They're not managing the property.
But they're paying their taxes, aren't they not?
This is not about paying taxes.
I don't believe just...
We're punishing taxpayers.
No, we're not. We're trying to protect the people who own homes.
All right, I just want to clarify something. Trustee Razor, I understand your concerns, Trustee Olson. I understand yours. I know that from talking with other municipalities, what I do more of, in very close proximity, some of these have put a lot of work into, and they're already on their second or third generation of what they're implementing in these regards, and they're being heralded for their success. And I'll say Park Forest is one of those. And in there, we share the same township, so we're in that close proximity. So I think it would be difficult for us to say that just because there's a higher density or higher crime or whatever else, to think that that doesn't... If they're implementing ordinances, I'm not saying one way or the other, but just the logic behind us is if another town that close to us is implementing ordinances to lean off potential problems or existing problems or whatever else, the thing we have to be cognizant of is when they leave those towns, because they're practicing responsible management, if you will, of their community, where are they going to go? They're going to go the path of least resistance is next door, which would be us. So is it prudent to come up with a mechanism to help give our officers, give our building department, whatever the case may be, the methods by which to keep those things from happening? From getting out of the house? I'm sorry?
Personally lost.
Not necessarily that are able to be enforced and maintained. The other thing is, from what I understand from a couple of the landlords I've talked to in other communities, getting a perspective of a similar concept, is that they actually appreciate this. And the reason why, I've been told, is I'm not involved in the market. So I can't relate to, you know, the fact that Larry Schreier happens to be your landlord and all that kind of stuff. I can't relate to the specifics of this now. But what I can say is that having talked to other landlords in other communities where they have similar types of code on the book, it actually helps them because the village council alongside of them says, if you get somebody who, our specifics might be a little bit different, but if you get somebody who is perpetually breaking the law in a property, and they're not tested by ownership to that property, by ordinance, you then have the ability to help the landlord get rid of somebody who we don't necessarily want living in the community because of their perpetual lawlessness. Chief, if I'm saying this correctly or I need help on that. But the other thing is, is that also landlord probably doesn't want that lawless behavior taking place within their property as well. And so that's what I've been led to believe. Have I been exposed to it directly personally? No. So this is at the discretion of the trustees to determine, is it appropriate to come up with things that are somewhat preventative as much as possible? To help, again, prevent, not because of fear, not because of individual concerns, but those individual concerns, unfortunately, it only takes one person to create a situation that we have to create rules that affects everybody sometimes. You know, we had that, you know, those types of things happen not too long ago.
See, I understand that. It just seems like all because of this company from California is buying up all our empty houses in this town, it seems like we're just old, let's tax that.
I'm going to say, I...
It's a natural tax on people that they don't need.
Yeah, I don't believe this is about any particular company, personal, because one of those homes that you're referring to is across the street from me. And I've got, I've got one of the best neighbors in the world, he happens to be a marine recruiter and he lives right across the street from me. He rents from the company I think you're referring to. And I don't take issue with that at all. I'm delighted that whether they own or they rent, that they're there.
It's like we're driving people away already with the high taxes. It's like, let's just tax them some more.
I think the cost is...
What is that, $75, $50, $100?
Those are fees.
This is not a...
That's a tax.
Well, it's a fee.
So you have to pay the owner of the house?
We pay quite a few fees.
So you pay licensing fees, have your house inspected?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I certainly did.
When we make improvements, we're sure to...
When I buy a house, I have to pay fees.
Okay, no, so when the landlord or when the person buys a house running out, do they not have it inspected by the village already? Yes, they did. Because before I moved into my house, they had it being inspected by the village.
Tony, is it, are you upset about the wording that it says crime prevention?
I'm not upset about that. I just understand why do we keep inflicting all these fees on people?
All right, let me, I'll give you a separate case in point if I can, and then I'll let you guys go back to figuring it out amongst yourselves. I was in the front office, was it, Michelle, was it? Two weeks ago, I was in the front office. A gentleman came in concerned...
Mr. Mayor, before we have any more discussion, can I make the motion? Can we have the discussion?
Yeah, let me finish my dialogue here just for a second. A gentleman came in, he was frustrated because he lived next door. And this isn't Trustee Olson, so it's not about him. It's not about any particular property or adjacent to him. It would just happen to be a situation where there was a safety, a life safety issue because of somebody else not taking care of their property adjacent to the resident, who was an owner occupied resident in the property. They had dead trees in their backyard, one branch had already fallen and broken his fence, and another one was about to fall in his garage, concerned about these things. And there's, there's a sensitivity, if you will, at times, you know, we all are sympathetic, I suppose, if somebody's on hard times and everything else and, you know, when they own the property and all that. We care about that, we do. And we're trying to give people as much, you know, latitude as possible to do things the right way, you know, on time. It was more frustrating because in this particular situation, and again, it's a heightened expectation that if somebody's doing something as a business, which is what the neighboring property was, because it was a rental property, that they're profiting off of the fact that that building is there. It's a profit. You know, Mr. Schreier or anybody else, you know, they're not doing it out of the goodness of their heart. They're doing it for a profit. We get that. We understand that. We're not opposed to the fact that that's the way our market and economy and everything work. You know, that the cost of doing business is following certain rules and living to a standard that you'd be willing to live next to. And I think that's where this is at. So I want to use that as a illustration, just so that we all understand that. But to Trustee Olson's point, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the contingency, if you will, for Larry to work through the formatting. But I want to take a motion to approve. Once I have a motion, in a second, you guys can have more discussion if you...
I'll make the motion.
Second, Paul Stu and Tom?
Now, can I have, my office in discussion?
Absolutely.
Actually, I think Trustee Razor made a good point. The fee structure has been questioned. And at the time, we were open to try and put some language in there that would recognize owners who actually live in the village of Monique because the fact that they will probably have a little more interest in this as well. The fee structure is not intended to make profit for the village. It just helps to pay for the inspectors who are involved and for the administrative costs that the village has. The question at the time was, or the difficulty at the time was, we weren't able to come up with a way to do it, Larry, for lack of a right word, legally.
Yes, sir.
So we're certainly open to that. But yeah, we want to make sure that people are vested in this community, invested making sure that our homes, whether they're rented or owned or properly maintained, invested making sure that homes that are rented are properly being rented out to people who are taking care of them and protecting the landowners as well as the people who live in it. It's a two-way street in this, the people who live in the homes as well as the people who are renting the homes. We've been pretty fortunate in Monique not to have a lot of this, but we do have some. And yes, certainly I have one next to me, but there's other people who've come forth and said, "I have one next to me over there and I want to see something done about it." Many people have done that. And so this was intended as a starting point, not an ending point, but a starting point, to be able to address some of these issues and then allow us to have something that we can continue to build upon in the future. I have no doubt that this will not be a finished document. I think when we get into next year, hopefully, there will be some people who'll be willing to sit down, spend some more time working on these type of things because we do need to continue to develop these type of programs if we're going to grow as a community and grow in the right direction.
Other trustees, Trustee Razor, you have more?
Yeah, well, as I am, we're trying to cover the fees for the inspection, but homeowners, your house is inspected before you move in as an occupant of the village? Do we charge them?
And again, without getting into the specifics of all that, I think the reality is, the reality is this is even dealing with the paperwork, in order to implement anything like...
It seems like we're just, we're just, you know, extra, "I'll run or something."
I don't believe that's the intention, I really don't. I believe that this is...
So I don't even put these single fees off homeowners then?
Well, Anthony...
Let's all have that pay, an extra yearly fee too.
Okay, okay, Anthony, I think as a point of reference here, we're...
Because that cost is not, my landlord's not going to pay for that. He's going to hand it down to me. So it means not only, the taxes go up this year, my rent is already going up. My rent's going to go up again next year because of this. So how about, we implement this for the whole entire village? Let's make everybody pay this.
Every time somebody buys a home, they have to pay fees.
Right.
Every time, and the intent of this is, if somebody's, if the landlord is renting this house and the people are living there six months and moving out, the house needs to be inspected and to make sure it's in the right condition to be rented to the next person. That's the broader intention.
Well, it is already been implemented by the village.
But not on a change of document, only a change of ownership. This allows it for being on a change of document.
Okay, because I was a change of document before I moved into my house and they had it being inspected from the village?
I believe, and I'll have to, I'm sorry, I'll have to divert back to Superintendent Brazil to offer some input on this because historically, he's got the most history in that org or deputy clerk call. But I believe the inspections by ordinance, regardless of what was practiced at the time, has been limited to change of ownership. Not based on change of document. And businesses, businesses in order to get their licenses have to also get, because again, it's for the profit. We're not trying to export or take a percentage of the margins or whatever else. You'll notice that these fees are extremely nominal. Now, you say that's not normal. That means if you charge him $100, that means the renter has to pay $100. Understand, but we're not in the business, if you will, of providing services without... We can't, we can't do more and not somehow find the users of that to be the ones that are ultimately going to have to pay for that service. So when we have to have the additional pay for looking staff to deal with these things, it adds to the amount of work and the cost to the village to orchestrate and manage us. So I think that's the logic behind it. Trustee Olson, when you concur that that's the logic behind it, that it's simply to cover our costs, not to capitalize on profit.
This will not make the village any profit. What it will do is help to offset the cost of making sure that the homes that these people are moving into are properly maintained. And there's too many people that were complaining they were moving into homes where the plumbing wasn't fixed or these other things were wrong. And the landlord said, "I'll take care of it." They moved in, it wasn't taken care of. And that's part of the issue. Now, not all landlords are that way. There's a lot of good landlords in this town.
See, I understand that. Why would you throw that in with a crime prevention?
I hear what you're saying.
Why is there not two separate ordinances on this? Well, there will be a separate one that has to do with nuisance.
Like what does that have to do with crime?
But that's a deprecating, what does that have to do with crime prevention?
So, and I think too, then you are stuck on the words crime prevention or crime free. So if we changed it to an ordinance stating, an ordinance promoting high standard rental housing, would that sit a little better with you? Or, and just going back to the fees, you know, okay, so most of our rental properties are either a single unit or up to six units. So if you're renting a house, that landowner has to pay a $75 fee and he says he's going to charge you and to the renter for that. Seventy-five divided by 12, that's about $2.50 a month.
Oh yeah, I don't worry about that. I'm just saying, it's just, I don't understand why there's going to be a year of fees.
My mortgage goes up every year, a lot more than $75, so you know, we're all...
Our taxes go up every year.
Trustee Razor, I appreciate and respect your input. But, and I'll be glad to allow you to continue. I want to give the other trustees an opportunity if you can. Any other trustees?
As a landlord here in town, I did look at this with a very critical eye to Anthony. And I'm, yeah, I'm not crazy about paying an extra, whatever it would be, $100 or so to, for this ordinance. But I, on the other hand, I would be very glad to have the teeth, as it were, to enforce, as a way to get a renter out of my property now. I've never had that as an issue with my properties. But doesn't, but believe me, I've heard horror stories of trying to eject people who are engaged in unlawful behavior and so forth, and it's sometimes can be very hard. So I guess I would view it, that fee, which to me, even as a landlord, is very nominal, I would say, but just to have that extra teeth. And as far as, let me address the comment about upkeep of the properties. If you would be hard pressed to see my homes and know they were rental properties because we can keep them up very well. We don't want them to look like a typical rental property. So I guess I would say I would be in favor of this ordinance. And I'm comfortable.
All right, so we have, with no further discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Razor?
No.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
It'll be 1735.
Okay, Larry, I will give a...
As I have.
That's enough. Old business? Any takers? New business? Open to public, non-agenda items? Please let me take cameras to three minutes. Come to the podium, smile and tell us your name and address. Will you have us a smile for a little bit? Okay.
Come on, Jay, come on, say something nice.
I've been to business, yeah.
You have nothing nice to say? Come on, you always have something to say.
I can say nice things.
No, never mind. All right, at this point, I believe we have something under executive session. There's a number of items listed here, so it could be any of those, I guess. It would be appropriate that it be, I believe it's under personnel or real estate, one of those two.
My portion would be real estate.
Okay, that'll be fine. And then, so I'll attempt, I'll assume going executive session.
I'll make that motion, I agree.
Horn and Razor, and can I have a little call?
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Razor, yes, Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.